Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening, Commissioners, sir. How are you?
I'm fine. I'm doing, I'm doing good. How are you?
I'm good. Summer's wrapping up and the kids are going to be starting school.
That's right, that's right. I got grandkids here, they're starting next week, I guess.
Yeah.
One of them.
My daughter is starting kindergarten. So she's going from like daycare, full-time daycare to kindergarten with more kids and I think she's pretty excited.
Yeah, I have a granddaughter that started kindergarten, she lives in Sacramento and she's doing the same thing, full-time daycare to kindergarten, but she's excited. I understand she's excited about it, a little nervous, but.
Yeah. Good evening, Commissioner Ching. Let's see who we have here. So I think we're waiting for Commissioner Bookbinder, Commissioner Rivlin, and Commissioner Cray.
I have four on the list so far. Rivlin has arrived.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Is that Commissioner Bookbinder?
Arriving.
This is Commissioner Rivlin.
Bookbinder is, I saw his name. Yeah, he's, he's arriving.
All right, just pulling in here.
I make this angle a little better.
Six six out of the seven.
All right.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Hello, Commissioner Bookbinder, good evening. All right, well, we'll go ahead and get started if that's okay with you, Director Eastwood.
All good by staff, thanks Chair Ostrowski.
Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of August 10. I'd like to call to order this meeting. This regular Planning Commission meeting will be conducted via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act and Executive Order 929-20 issued by the Governor. Corinne, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yeah, in alphabetical order, Commissioner Bookbinder.
President.
Colville. Cray. Rivlin.
Here.
This sir.
There.
Vice Chair Ching.
Yeah.
And Chair Ostrowski.
Here.
We're missing one. Commissioner Cray.
Thank. Thank you, Corinne. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes and does anyone have any corrections or modifications to the minutes? All right, seeing none, would anyone like to make a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'll move, I'll move, I move to approve the minutes of July 27, 2021.
Thank you, Commissioners, sir. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Great, that was Commissioner Bookbinder. Corinne, may we have a voice vote, please?
Commissioner's Bookbinder.
Hi.
Colville.
Hi.
Cray. Rivlin.
Hi.
This sir.
Hi.
Vice Chair Ching.
Hi.
Chair Ostrowski.
Hi.
Six zero one.
Thank you, Corinne. Director Eastwood, do we have any communication, agenda items, or postponements for the commission this evening?
Thanks, Chair Ostrowski, Robbie Eastwood, Plan Director, no new communications, no recommended postponements, no recommended modifications to the agenda. Thank you.
Great. All right, our next item are the oral requests, so I'll open the public hearing here. This is the point in the meeting where any member of the public may address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. You may speak for up to five minutes, but the Planning Commission may not take any action today. Would anyone like to speak before we get into our agendized item for this evening? All right, other than Commissioner Adam Bookbinder's cat, who looks like he would like to say something, or she, we will close the public hearing in this case and move to the meeting agenda, very cute cat, by the way. So before we get started, Commissioners, do we have any disclosures regarding items on the agenda this evening?
Actually, I have a disclosure, although I'm not sure it's at all relevant, that oddly enough, this is my dentist.
Oh, that's, that's quite an endorsement, I must say.
But, yeah, it's kind of strange that she's my, she's my official dentist. So I don't think that necessarily, we have to recuse myself, I don't think.
Not, not unless you're, not unless you're getting a discount of some kind.
I'm definitely not going to get a discount.
All right, great. So we'll move on to the first item of the evening, which is the public hearing to consider the application PLN-2021-53 of Evoca Architecture Interiors for a conditional use permit to allow establishment of a dental office medical services clinic within an existing office building and a parking modification permit to allow a reduction in the required number of parking stalls for property located at 399 North Third Street in the C2 Commercial, General Commercial Zoning District. And our planner for this item is Daniel Fama, welcome Planner Fama, take it away.
Good evening, let me share my screen here. Right, so we do have an application for a conditional use permit with a parking modification permit for property located at 399 North Third Street. This is an approximately 14,000 square foot commercial property located on North Third, south of Hamilton Avenue within the city's C2 General Commercial Zoning District. This property is currently improved with a 6,100 square foot office building that was approved by the Planning Mission in 1980. The application for the conditional use permit would allow establishment of a dental clinic, which is classified as a type of medical office. The condition use permit would also allow for associated minor site alterations to the property. That would include a new ADA accessible ramp from the public sidewalk that you see in the bottom right-hand corner of the presentation. The path to travel through the parking lot that connects from the sidewalk to the ramp through the accessible parking stalls all the way through the rear of the property to the trash enclosure. It would also incorporate additional new compliant ADA parking stalls that are shown further right as well. And then upgrading the existing trash enclosure in place to satisfy current stormwater requirements. As far as the application, there is a request for a parking modification permit to allow a reduction in the otherwise required parking to allow establishment of the dental clinic. In terms of the proposed uses, floor plan configuration, here we have the first and second floor. As you see from the side plan, the building actually can't leaveers over the parking lot such that the second floor is significantly larger than the first. The architect had designed the building so that the first floor is largely limited to support space such as staff meeting room, lockers, and storage area, whereas the second floor is largely reserved for the actual treatment rooms of the dental practice. With regard to the parking modification permit, a medical office is subject to a parking standard of one stall per 200 square feet of gross floor area. This is a parking standard comparable to retail that requires, in this case, 31 parking stalls for the 6,100 square foot, square feet of building area. As we configured, the property would incorporate 26 parking stalls at approximately a rate of 235, one stall per 235 square feet, resulting in a five parking stall deficit. As discussed a little more detail in the staff report, staff's proposed calculation looks at the parking demand of the building in two ways. It recognizes that the ground floor is largely limited to more support spaces that would not normally engender a greater parking demand as for the overall dental clinic. And so if the first floor is looked at, at a parking requirement, that's more comparable to a bank or financial institution of one stall per 350 square feet, you would have a requirement for five stalls for the ground floor and then allowing the second floor to be treated as standard medical, one stall per 200 square feet, total yielding 26 stalls, which would satisfy the parking that is being provided onsite. Because this is a specialized way to look at a parking calculation, it does technically constitute a parking modification permit. If the Planning Commission can ask for a parking modification permit for this proposal that effectively would render the building unusable for medical office and its primary purpose as offices would need to continue into the future. In conclusion, staff does recommend that the planning commission take the following action to adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit with the parking modification permit and finding that the project is categorically exempt under CECL. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Planner Fama?
Planner Fama, is there precedent for splitting building uses into different categories as you previously mentioned a few moments ago?
It was more common in the past, particularly with industrial buildings that incorporated components of warehousing and, for instance, an office. So in the past, you would have a single industrial building and two-thirds of it may be warehouse and one-third may be office, and so the city did apply different parking standards in those scenarios. That is less common today, just as for variety of reasons. But in this particular case, this configuration would also be codified as part of the conditional use permit requiring that that ground floor not be used for treatment purposes.
Okay, great, so the, the ground floor could never be switched to a patient chair of some kind.
Correct. And that historically had been somewhat of an issue in the past, simply because older industrial buildings, for instance, didn't have conditional use permits so that those restrictions weren't well codified. But here, since we would have a conditional use permit in the future, any planner would, as part of their normal plan review, look up the conditional use permit and find the restriction.
Thank you.
I have a question. So it's my understanding the previous tenant had a relation, had an understanding contract with the previous restaurant owner next door to make use of their parking stalls, and that was some kind of private arrangement. You know, there's quite a, there's, that, the restaurant has quite a few parking slots as well as across the street in the whatever that is, the, the office spaces across the street, the 250 Hamilton spaces. Can we, can we, as part of the approval, require some kind of arrangement to get some extra stalls in those other parking lots?
No, so those properties are separate from this application. They are now within the scope of review in terms of the public notice or the property owner's authorization to do that. So as you did indicate, those are effectively private arrangements that, as far as we can tell, we're not subject to any city approval.
Then, do we have a SARC report for this item, Vice Chair?
Yes, Chair, we, we do. We were in support of the parking modification permit, and per the notes, we can condition a restriction on the, the first floor use, so it meets the findings. Consistent with the conversation we just had.
I have one more question, maybe it's better for the the, the owner or tenant, but I don't know if you know this, Daniel. So in the, in the, in the in the document, they mentioned there will be 18 employees, 18 workers, the dentist and 17 employees. It sounds like a lot, you know, for the 26 stalls and patients. Do we know whether or not all of these employees will be onsite at one time?
The applicants team is prepared to respond to that question.
Okay.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? All right. Well, with that, I'll open the public hearing with the applicant. Would the applicant like to speak?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner, and I'll just quickly go over some of the items. Dr. Lawler, as you well know, what she and I talked about on this project was like Daniel described, that the lower level was kind of support spaces and the upper level was primarily the dental use. And in the last hearing, we did agree that like the lower level, we would write on our documents that lower level will never be converted to an actual dental chair or treatment area. In regards to the parking for the, a number of people, I think she had mentioned 18 staff, but they would be staggered, she would be there certain days, there'll be associates, there'll be hygienists working, so it is going to be staggered. So it's not a full demand. In addition, she and I did discuss that, like, you know, just to maximize the use of the available parking, she would be giving a lot of like carpool, van pool incentives to the employees, probably subsidizing or like fully subsidizing their transit use. Maybe provide some sort of information packet for new employees to show that, like, she's earnest about them trying to use public transportation and encourage that use. The VTA stop is like a block away. Just using that should be very good. And then, you know, just in the last SARC meeting as well, we agreed to provide some bicycle parking racks outside, which would again encourage employees and even your patients to arrive, as long as they're not too much, in too much pain, they arrive on bicycles, right? Like, and I think that's the goal of our city as such, to encourage that sort of use to this, overall, to increase public transportation and these private methods of communication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, I have another question for, for the architect. It looks to be like there's an elevator in there, from the first to the second floor. Am I correct about that?
That's correct.
Yeah, and, and will that be definitely an operating elevator?
Absolutely. It's a new elevator that's being added. So this, it was kind of interesting. Eighty percent of this office is on the upper level, and the only access was that stair from that, that level going up. There were also stairs, some steps coming up from the actual parking level up to the main level. It's, it's very difficult. So what we are doing is we're providing a ramp from the public sidewalk up to the entrance, a new entry, new elevator, allowing a person either in the, the van accessible space or coming off the sidewalk to access the building, coming through the elevator up to the upper level. And so we are going to make this building fully accessible, which is a huge improvement for what it is currently.
Thank you.
All right. Well, if you don't have any other questions for the applicant, I will close the public hearing now. Thank you very much for the, the additional details. And and then I'll open it up to the commission for discussion. Thank you. Who would like to get us started?
I can get started. I talked about this at SARC. I appreciate that we're being flexible about potential of a different use, especially medical type office that people would, more people would be able to walk to, because it's close to our downtown where a lot of people live. And I especially appreciate staff finding a way to make the parking requirements reflect the actual shape and requirements of the building. And I realize that the answer from earlier, that they will not need 18 people, have 18 employees onsite at any given point, that that's been answered, but I'd like to suggest, like, more broadly, a different perspective on that sort of thing, that we had discussed at SARC and within the packet, that there had been an option for a parking sharing program with a neighboring use. I believe it was a restaurant, which tends not to be busy at the same time that the dental office does. And the applicant decided not to go with that because this is more straightforward and that's not required here. But if we did accidentally underpark them, it's like there are ways to address that. On the other hand, if we wind up prohibiting uses or constructing additional durable infrastructure, like requiring the construction of more parking, that's kind of a one-way ratchet, it's very hard to undo that. So I realize that we're all worried about not providing enough parking, but it is a significant danger if we require too much. With, with that, all that said, I think this is an excellent use for it, the parking, the parking modification permit looks reasonable. I feel like we could definitely do this for other uses, especially across in our more densely packed corridors. So, yeah, that's what I have.
Well, I guess, I guess I'll talk. I, I think it's a, I think it's a, you know, a building's empty now, not used, and I think this would be a great long-term usage for that building. Dental, dental practices are usually very stable and long-term. Before Dr. Lawler, I was a patient of Dr. Goldberg's for 35 years before she took over his took over his patients. So they're around for a long time, right? So I think it's a great use. I was only concerned a little bit in terms of the parking because it's adjacent to a neighborhood parking on Third Street, and I would be concerned about people parking in the neighborhood, but if they're not gonna, if they're gonna have staggered employees and, and it, it looks to me like the parking will be sufficient. And then, and as, as Commissioner Bookbinder said, there, there, there are future options that they could be looking at if necessary. So I'm, I'm glad to hear about the elevator. I was, because I had taken a look at the building, I was a little concerned about, you know, ADA requirements and people having to walk up to, to the second flights, so that solves that problem. So I'm, I think it's a, a great opportunity. That's all I have.
Great. All right, I'll just make a few comments here. I really appreciate the way that Planner Fama did the parking analysis and did the comparison to, to the banking sector and showed that with that type of analysis, that the parking was sufficient, because I think that seems to be similar in the sense that there are some employees that work throughout the day, and then there are customers or clients that, that kind of come and go throughout the day with visits or appointments. So I think that conclusion makes a lot of sense to me in terms of the meeting that, that parking requirement. And, you know, these days with kind of more and more things moving to virtual, the, the idea of operating kind of a business in a physical location is probably going to be less it's gonna be less of a requirement, but something like a dental office where you actually have to be there physically to, to get some sort of service is definitely going to be a need. So we really are going to have to figure out how to make sure we're accommodating kind of the businesses that, that do need physical space as opposed to others that don't. So I think I'm supportive of the of the staff's recommendation here.
May I, may I weigh in, Chair? I know you're usually the final thought, but I I definitely understand the logic and I think I can support this. However, I want to raise just a light concern that there were 11 patient chairs and conceivably, at any given time, 11 people could be under, you know, their procedure or cleaning, and then there would be 11 attendants and likely a receptionist and likely people waiting in the waiting room. So at any given time, you definitely would exceed that 26 number. So that, that was the, the tricky part to me, but I do appreciate Planner Fama's analysis and calculation. And I do agree that now that it's codified or could be possibly codified, that the ground floor is not available. It does meet the standard, so I, I can support it based on, on that kind of logic. But I, I do want to raise that concern with my fellow cohorts here, colleagues, Commissioners, anyway. It makes sense, but I just want to make sure we're comfortable with, with that as a group.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Rivlin. Do we have any other comments from the commission?
Yeah, you know, I just, I'll just comment real quick that I never got the link, so that's why I'm on late, and I'm sorry, and I'll, I'll abstain from the voting, but just wanted to let you guys know I was, I was here, I just couldn't get out. Thank you.
Good to know. I see you snuck in through Vice Chair Ching's access there.
Yeah. I emailed everybody, but nobody responded to me, so that, that's okay, I get, I get the point, but I'll have to abstain, but this was not a I didn't have a problem with the idea.
Good to know. Next time, we will definitely double check our emails when, when you're unexpectedly absent. Vice Chair Stuart Ching, number two.
Mind that.
Scary.
Shall I move, make a motion to adopt a resolution?
That'd be great.
So I'll move to adopt a resolution, reference attachment one, approving a conditional use permit with a parking modification permit and finding the project categorically exempt on the section 15301, class one of the Californian Environmental Quality Act pertaining to the minor alteration of existing facilities.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Corinne, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner's Bookbinder.
Hi. Hi.
And I'll abstain.
Rivlin.
Hi.
This sir.
Hi.
Vice Chair Ching. Chair Ostrowski.
Hi. All right.
Can, can I ask a question as an aside to either the architect or, I don't know if Dr. Lawler's here. Is, is this, is she opening additional office or is this, is she moving her, one of her other offices here?
I'll open the public hearing so you can respond. Sorry. Yeah, I am planning on moving the office to the new location. There, yes.
Both of them?
I have three locations and we're consolidating all three into one location.
Okay.
So two San Jose and one Saratoga, moving into Campbell.
All right, well, maybe in a couple of weeks, I'll see you, Doc. I got an appointment.
Awesome. All right, you'll have to plan accordingly. Make sure you note that change of address.
Yeah.
All right, okay, so the Planning Commission's action is final and thus appealed in writing to the city clerk within 10 calendar days. And so thank you very much and congratulations on your, on your new space and best of luck with the, with the business. So we'll, getting close to closing the meeting here, I just want to ask Director Eastwood if there's anything to report to the commission this evening.
Thanks, Chair Ostrowski. Commissioners, sorry, Commissioner Cray, I just saw your email. A little too late, sorry, I had to slip in under, under another link. Just three, three things. One, hey, thanks, we pushed out that sign up for the APA conference, great opportunity, and see a couple of you are taking advantage of that. And I will continue to work with Corinne, we're looking at some other potential training opportunities using your budget, so stay tuned for some more that we'll look for. Two, just a note, so starting next time, we were gonna shift to action minutes. And I hope And I hope I'm looking at all your faces and don't see them aghast at that. So that's great. So it's kind of industry standard now. Corin's done a, an outstanding job of capturing all the details of all the meetings, but seeing that our city council uses action minutes, the jurisdiction I came from, kind of top to bottom, all commissions and decision-making bodies using action minutes, we're gonna shift to action minutes, which kind of frees her up to, to help out more at the meetings and other things. So didn't want that to be a surprise and hope there's not a lot of love lost there. As you know, we're all in Zoom. Things continue to be recorded. We'll have a record regardless. But in terms of the minutes, they'll focus again just on the, the motions and the actions. You'll see that going forward. And then last but not least, coming back to a discussion I had, I think a few meetings ago, general plan and housing element. So back in June, there was a meeting for city council. The, the general plan update had been ongoing for five years. And it had been presented to the city council back in October, and there was still some discussion on next steps. Meanwhile, under state mandated requirements, the housing element must be updated, adopted, certified by the end of next year. So seeing all that, we had approached the council with proposal to merge those two, kickstart a little bit the general plan to get it finished and finish the housing element on time. And in June, they had agreed and given direction to the department to move forward with that. That leads into my announcement today. So next Tuesday, if you want to track on the city council agenda, is approval of the contract with the consultants to, to get that going. We're recommending using the consultant that worked on the general plan that's de novo for the general plan and the EIR portion. And then in another consultant, we're bringing in because de novo is stretched a little thin, Metropolitan Planning Group, they're a local firm, actually based in Campbell, did the last housing element. And they're gonna work on the housing element. So together, that team will work with staff very aggressively over the next year plus in bringing the general plan and housing element forward. The reason I say all that is we want to bring the general plan to you soon. So the general plan that went to the council in October twenty twenty had come out of the G-PAC. And that had some discussion and feedback. And we're planning on, the, the whole strategy to this is trying to get what's in that general plan reviewed by the planning commission, the council, ideally settled sometime this year and, and start to shift into housing element work to say, is, is there any loose ends? Is there any policies? Is there any programs to try and, try and, you know, sort of dock that and, and where Campbell wants to go and then focus on the housing element. So we'd like to bring to you, of course, as a recommending body, it's in your charter, to, to look at, so in Orange General Plan, the, the general plan that had been reviewed by the city council in October, together with some recommended changes they had, together with a few additional recommendations from staff. And we wanted to have a long study session, or it can be short, however you want to do it, in, in September, that just reviews that document. So, so that's the, that's the kind of forward thinking, looking to September. It's a bit of a heavy lift. So, so the proposal is sometime at the end of this month, August, we'll have a general plan document that we'd like to give to you to review, together with some, some edits and notes. And then at, we're looking at September fourteenth, planning commission meeting, to use that solely for a study session for you all to review and, and make your recommendations around that. So we'll again work with the staff, work with Corin and set that up. I didn't want that to be a surprise, want to give you adequate lead time. And it's again a big work plan item that's coming towards you. So with that, I'll close up and of course be available for questions.
Thanks to see things moving along there.
Thanks.
Thank you, Director Eastwood, for giving us an update. I'm looking forward to working on this. So September fourteenth, and I'm certainly looking forward to getting to see what the draft will, will actually be reviewing. Will we also be getting sort of a rubric about like what the requirements are, what, what exactly are the sorts of decisions that are in our purview?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, I'm glad you asked that upfront. I think we'll, yeah, sort of some guardrails and, you know, what's required, what's your role to recommend, perhaps some key policies and programs to look at. So, yeah, we, we can bring in sort of with that a guidance document on, on how best to focus your attention and, 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 you know, achieve the role you're in.
Excellent. And there's one other thing I just wanted to mention. There's the Santa Clara County, there, there are countywide community meetings for the housing element update process and the one for Campbell is on August eighteenth.
Yeah, I'm glad, oh, sorry. I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah, we, and I'm, I miss not noticing that too. So we're, we're pushing out through some social media channels and, and email blasts tomorrow. It's sort of, so what Commissioner Buckbinder mentioned, that the city of Campbell, together with the other fifteen cities, hired a consultant to help all of us just prepare a housing element, sort of an economy scale. And collectively, that group's called that, the Planning Collaborative, and it's administered by the Cities Association. It's done great work, same model up in San Mateo County between the cities up here, and we're sort of working our way through how it works here. But one collective approach that we decided on is, in terms of outreach, at least to start, to have broad countywide meetings to reach out to the community, get them educated a bit on what are housing elements, you know, what are housing issues at the broad level. And there's a series of meetings at countywide that will focus on that. So, and they're split into different cities. So, so what Commissioner Buckbinder mentioned, one of these broad county meetings is next Wednesday, August eighteenth. And, and Campbell will have a breakout room, so we'll both be part of the broad conversation. And then folks who are interested in Campbell housing issues will have a breakout room where we can discuss those. So I'll, in addition to the, the normal social media channels, I'll make sure I work with Corin to make sure you all get that notice. But again, thanks for reminding me. That will be next Wednesday evening and we'll get that out.
Well, that's all I have. Looking forward to seeing folks there. Um, oh, actually, just one question. Is there any reason why, obviously, you know, I have some interest in the housing element? Is there any reason why I shouldn't attend and comment at that?
No, I, I can't think of one. I, our attorney's present, but I, I don't, you know, if there's some sort of conflict of interest or issue, you as, you as a both a member of the public can attend and listen and, and, and if you want to provide your own comments, you can. But Bill, you can weigh in here if there's some advice to Commissioner Buckbinder or the rest of commissioners.
Yeah, the, the only advice that I, I would give is that you should be clear, you're not speaking as a planning commissioner, but you're speaking on your own behalf.
Thank you. I will make sure to do that.
All righty. Well, thanks, everybody. Nice to see all of you this evening and thanks for all of your hard work on the, on the planning commission. And I'd like to close the meeting of August tenth and wish all of you a nice evening. See you in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.